All right, so we have returned to open session. First on the agenda is welcome to Hauser.
Right.
We'll move past, okay?
Yeah, we're gonna move on.
So...
Welcome to Hauser.
And, all right, at this time, is there any public comment? All right, then, at this time, are there any changes to the agenda? Okay, first then are the, next then are the committee meetings. First is the facilities committee.
Yes.
Joel.
We're about to hear a presentation from our architect and staff about the facilities plan and what the current plans look like and how far they've come along. And this really represents a lot of hard work by DLA and Vistara and the administration and the principals. And please note that the district has worked hard to ensure that their design works for our students and the staff who will be in the building. DLA has worked with the principals to make sure that they're addressing any unknown concerns and known concerns and make sure it works for day-to-day use. There's no vote required as part of the presentation, but please feel free to give your thoughts and comments when the appropriate time comes. Also, please note that with regards to Hollywood, the lease with Hollywood Citizens Association and some parking with the Village are currently in flux and in progress, and so those will have some potentially impacts on exactly how the final Hollywood site plan ends up in the end. Now, Martha.
Can I go over there? I'm just saying, you're late here.
Wait, this is good.
Thanks, Joel. This is an exciting evening, I think, for all of us. This has been work that has been a long time now in process. We thank, obviously, the board for being here, but for community members and a lot of our administration and our entire facilities advisory committee for being here. I will introduce them in just a few minutes, but our goal tonight is to review our process to date. You have seen concept designs. This is really at a point what we call our final drawings, really represents a lot of collaboration, a lot of iteration, and bringing a very student-centered set of construction drawings to all of you for consideration and discussion. So, we're gonna share plans about all four of our elementary schools, and then at the end, we'll also be going over project costs and financial projections, and then responding to questions from the Board of Education. Tonight is a formal Board of Education meeting, so as much as it may feel like you want to participate, it's our Board of Education, actually, that will be the ones asking questions and participating. So, many of you know, and this is, again, a quick review for everybody, we started our facilities advisory committee process formally in April of 2017. The goals of the committee were very much related to very specific goals that came up in the strategic plan that was developed during the 2015-2016 school year about making improvements to our facilities. We've engaged the community in surveys. We've done other community engagement events at each of the schools, really looking to gather feedback along the way. We did a demographic study, looking at our enrollment. That was a key part of our process, as I think people who live here and have children in the schools know that, as a school district, over the past 10 years, we have grown quite a bit. And the facilities improvements really relate to a lot of our, you know, student needs, obviously. We hired DLA architects, so they're here with us tonight, both Steve Wright and Ryan Kelly are here from DLA, have been key members of our process, really since that 2017 and even before that, in terms of doing some initial analysis of all the facilities. So, we've had a lot of focus groups, a lot of conversations with our principals and district leadership. We've had ongoing work with the facilities advisory committee. Really, a time I really want to thank Linda Murphy and Joel Markle specifically, who have come to a lot of 7:30 a.m. meetings and meetings that we thought were gonna last an hour that lasted two hours, and, again, just a lot of conversation and a lot of time, and very much appreciated. So, and again, I think I will continue to just point out how impressed I have been with both DLA and our principals working together, that there have been times where DLA would reach out and say, "Could I have another meeting with the principals?" I'm like, "Sure." And they would say, "Sure," and they would come to the table and look at design ideas, and it was really how we got to the tweaking and the honing, and you're gonna hear from each of them tonight as part of that process. So, again, let me formally thank the members of our facilities advisory committee, and I just mentioned Linda and Joel, but also Jim Fitten, our Director of Finance, is here, Angela Dozel, our Director of Teaching and Learning, Pam Shaw, our Director of Special Education and Student Services, Don Tifano, our Director of Technology, is also, he was just right there at the table. Bill Radcare, Director of Building and Rounds, is here tonight. Even though I think he comes to work at 3:30 in the morning, he really wanted to be here tonight. He has been a critical part of this process. Also, Jason Smith, our Instructional Technology Coordinator, Todd Gierman, Kesmira Gorman, Kim Hefner, and Pete Gatz, our principals, that have been, as I already said, just key members of this committee and this process. So, as you all know, we, early on in our process, we knew that this was more than putting an addition on Ames School, that this really became an opportunity to solve district-wide problems, and that we knew we had additional needs and additional capacity at Ames by purchasing the two residential properties, really on either side of Ames School, that we knew we could get to an expansion there, and what would that expansion mean for, really, all of our schools and all of our students. So, we established certain key priorities. One was security. The other that has been key in all this is separating play and parking, having a place to eat lunch and conduct large group projects. For us, that means a multipurpose room at our schools, reconfiguring, updating our libraries, and obviously, having adequate educational space for everybody. These are the strategic plan goals that were developed, as I said, in the 2015-2016 school year about optimizing and reconfiguring our spaces to address the needs, and also looking at safety, accessibility, appropriateness of outdoor play and learning. And we knew we had to get our sites correct, and we need to understand where our additions were gonna go before we could, you know, effectively determine what the outside play and outside learning areas should look like. So with that, we really came up with this list, and you're gonna see this list when we look at every one of our school design ideas around, again, really, the things that I just mentioned, and I will leave that for a little more detail when the principals and Ryan Kelly, our architect, join you in looking at your school. Just wanna take just a moment to give it aside about the Central Hauser campus. So, the Central Hauser campus, as people who live here, work here, send kids to school here, know that the Central Hauser campus around parking and the separation of play and parking have really presented some unique challenges. So, we have set up a separate agreement with Lakota Group, which is a landscape architect group, and Gualt Hamilton, which is an engineering and traffic engineering group, to really do some specific studies around that. And that really, we, that process is sort of going on now, but we anticipate that that work, that they might propose to us or will propose to us, would be probably in the 2021 year, and it's really not part of this current plan, but it hasn't been forgotten. So, just wanted to make that quick mention. And with that, I wanna invite, we're gonna do this in alphabetical order, Todd Gierman, the principal at Ames Elementary School, and Ryan Kelly, who are going to kind of join you here and walk you through the Ames plans and kind of the principal perspective around programming, and Ryan's perspective around architecture. So, I'm gonna turn it over to the two of them.
Just a side note, Martha, I was doing your tree lighting. Those are fireworks. If anybody was wondering.
It was raining.
Yeah.
I get under the table.
I'm thinking, what the heck?
Yeah.
Good evening, District 96 Board of Education Superintendent Dr. Ryan Toy. Pleasure to present to you the plans for Ames Elementary School. When we were looking at what we needed to do with Ames, some of the things that came to mind over the past few years were solving crowded issues at our campus. And Ames is one of the unique buildings in District 96 in that we were able to acquire two properties on either side of our school, and the board was able to purchase those properties, and that allowed us to now take Ames and expand it, and provided opportunities not only for the students of Ames, but throughout District 96 and the other elementary schools, which you will see in this presentation. I can't take credit for this, because Mr. Kelly came up with this, so I wanna give credit where credit is due, but when you look at the plans for Ames, there's three words that come to mind: circulation, congregation, and storage. Circulation, congregation, and storage. And you will see those three words repeatedly woven throughout the plans as Mr. Kelly goes over that with us. We built Ames for flexibility. We have a new library we're looking at, two new classrooms, additional itinerant spaces. Continue to be a three-section school, but have space with being a three-section school. Right now, we are a three-section school, but it's really tight. Advanced learners will have their own classroom now. They won't be working in a room that was meant to be stored between two rooms. Getting staff out of storage rooms, additional staff out of storage rooms, itinerant staff members such as speech and language, psych, social worker, that are working in, once again, rooms that are between two classrooms that were meant for storage, and giving them true office space so they can work with students. Better flow throughout the entire building, you'll see throughout the plans. We have some learning hubs. We get our lunchroom back, which was huge. Right now, the scheduling of trying to flow through lunch with using the gymnasium for our lunchroom has caused some scheduling issues, not only with the Ames campus, but with my colleagues' campuses as well, when we go down, we sit down to do our master scheduling. And we have also, we were able to get an additional classroom at Ames that could be possibly used if the district and the Board of Education decides to go in the direction of full-day kindergarten. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Kelly now, and I'm gonna jump in, if need be, to explain what the plans look like.
Thank you all for having us and for your close evaluation of the plans. It's been a lot of hard work going into this and a long process, as I'm sure you've all been a part of. Start with the site plan at Ames. As Martha mentioned, they had the fortunate opportunity to buy two properties adjacent to the school. This gave us, really, the opportunity to look at one of their goals very seriously of separating parking and play. I'm gonna try and use the, there we go. So, we have parking back here, and then play would be over here to the east in the site of the former Repton House. So, that was a very important goal. This gave us the space to be able to look at circulation in a safe way, look at drop-off in a safe way, and look at the opportunity to possibly expand for early learners. Now, as you look at the original building, the context is architectural, it's historic, there's a lot to derive from it. The original building was built in 1965, I believe, with two additions after that. What we decided in looking at how to add on to Ames, we wanted to do it in a really way that was sort of sympathetic to the existing architecture. So, for us, that meant looking at the existing brick, and the original brick is kind of what we decided as the context that we would take to move forward with the addition. So, that addition here is kind of a bird's-eye view. That addition is to the northeast in the rear. As you can see, this gives a good circulation through the site. It offers good opportunity for a drop-off behind the building, as well as in front of the building on South Coast Drive, as they currently do. So, it gives a couple of opportunities to alleviate traffic issues for pickup and drop-off.
I could point out one thing. So, the addition, if those of you that are familiar with Ames, if you could point to the gym there, Ryan? So, the addition is gonna be attached to the back of the gymnasium over there.
So, now, in taking that original brick, what we all wanted to do was to reflect the progressive learning that was happening inside the building, and look at this as a building that was moving forward, moving the district forward and moving Ames forward in terms of how they teach, and also in terms of the architecture. So, we used an accent brick, turned it vertically on a soldier course that gives, creates a similar banding to the original building, but a different, more modern field that reflects the progressive learning that's happening inside the building. What you'll see here at the top corner, we've taken the traditional window and we've opened it up. That happens on the other side as well, as you'll see in the next slide, and that reflects the two congregation spaces. So, that is the new multipurpose room where lunch would be held, and then on the second floor is the new library and media center. This here is just a view through the drive. One thing that was important, and we heard from the administration and the staff, was that signage was important, so having students be able to identify with their school, finding a subtle way to do that in the corbel brick seemed like a nice elegant way to show sort of reverence to the existing architecture, but also give the kids some identification of, "We're at Ames School, we're excited to be here." Here, that's that other shot that I was talking about of the multipurpose room. Again, the windows remain traditional, the banding of the brick remained traditional, as well as the stone banding around the building. I can't find it, shaking too much. See how that continues along continuously? But then we break up that mass, one, to bring natural light and connecting this to the outside, which is an important element in terms of learning, but then also to signify a different type of learning that's happening at those two corners. And here, what you see is that the expanse that's open for what we will determine to be the play area. So, this definitely separates the parking from the play. It gives adjacency to the congregation space and the multipurpose room, as well as to the early learners who would have direct access to this area. So, as we look at the floor plans, and I won't go into too much detail, because I know they're hard to see at this scale, but on the first floor, I'll walk up. Will you all be able to hear me if I walk up?
Speaking sort of near Joel's microphone.
Right. It can't do it.
All right, so, I'm gonna point, and then I'll talk. So, over here, you'll see the multipurpose room, which is the one corner that we've opened up for the mass of the building. Also, on the first floor, which you'll see are three early learner or primary classrooms. Those have bathrooms inside the classrooms, and they're well-suited for early learners. In each of these floor plans, what you'll see is that the, at the center of that is either a learning hub or a congregation space. So, those are flexible areas. They have multiple teaching walls, so they can be used for gross motor skills, they can be used for teacher training, or just sort of impromptu learning. What you see on the second floor is the multipurpose room, I'm sorry, the media center and library. That corner is also opened up, and there, we're taking your traditional library with your traditional stacks, but then also looking at things like a green screen and flexible seating. It gives really more options for learning and reflects the progressive learning that's already happening within the school. Also, on the second floor, some added itinerant classrooms. So, those are for sort of breakout spaces if a child needs to be, you know, have one-on-one training, but also some office space for itinerants that would travel and not be there full-time.
And Ryan, I also like to interject about itinerants. It's one of our jargony words, but small group learning, so often reading specialists, social workers, psychologists, math intervention, those kinds of...
Occupational therapists, physical therapists, which are currently now, you know, giving their services to students, you know, therapeutic interventions in the hallway. So, now they will be at the privacy of having that, what Dr. Ryan Toy just said, itinerant space.
The idea was to create flexibility here, so give these rooms flexibility. You'll see on the first floor, one of those rooms has a folding partition that had variable surfaces on either side, so that could be obviously split into two classrooms or breakout spaces or enlarged into one space. So, again, the idea of flexibility, different kinds of learning, progressive kinds of learning, was a piece that we tried to weave in into this plan and into this building. Here, just some added shots of those flexible learning hub and itinerant spaces. The top image there is that first-floor learning hub. Again, that could be used for gross motor skills, added teaching walls, things of that nature. The second image, moving down, what you can see is kind of a typical classroom. What we look for there is define a teaching wall, but then also look at different types of surfaces, like ritable surfaces, so different kinds of learning, or everything becomes a teaching tool, and in some way has a functional quality, but also benefits the learning and education of the children. Those are some of the things we've tried to weave into our standard classrooms. The image at the bottom there is the multipurpose room. This really can be a congregation space for the community. It would serve as the lunchroom during regular school hours and any other events that they might, they might need it for.
Which, right now, I wanna jump in there for a minute. When we had a multipurpose room slash lunchroom before, we had to eliminate that to make Ames a three-section school. We would use it for grade levels, we'd get together, so fifth grade might want to do an entire lesson, a science lesson, and we currently don't have the space to do that. We would get all three sections of fifth grade together in that same space. Right now, it's a scheduling, it's pretty much, it's like a roulette of what space is available at what time. This would afford grade levels to go back to what we were used to doing, and that is having that large group space for grade-level units that they want to work on.
This is an image of the media center. So, again, you can see that it's open. There's some traditional stacks in terms of the books, but there's also a green screen on the far, far wall over there, which allows the kids to create videos. It also can double as sort of a maker space with some built-in cabinetry. Sort of impromptu learning can happen over here, where there's some flexible seating. There's several different teaching walls, so it gives different options in different ways for the space to be utilized. So, flexibility was really key in developing that. This really all came from the teachers, you know, it came from the staff and the administration. We were able to go through a visioning process where we started talking about, not about architecture, but about ideas, about how you teach, and those really formed the building and inspired how these spaces came together. This here is a learning stair that's adjacent to the media center. Again, this is, this really becomes an impromptu theater. This is a, we call it wall talker, and so it's a magnetic ritable surface, it's projectable. So, here, you could be teaching here, you can have a presentation here, you could do, you know, continuing education and learning for your staff. It's got just a variety of uses that, you know, that can benefit the staff and the kids. To back up, the idea of having all of these areas interconnected and off of themselves also allows for larger congregation, like you said, having those spaces where all the staff can come together or one grade level come together has been a challenge, so it's something that we tried to provide in putting this together.
I think the gains are pretty much what we, what I opened with. You know, we're looking at getting that multipurpose room back to utilize for lunch, large group learning, which I referenced before, and I talked about those grade-level units, the additional itinerant spaces, and really, when you look at that, you can't say it's just for staff, you know, these stat, these particular itinerant staff members, you're talking about the occupational therapists, physical therapists, speech and language pathologists, they're servicing students, so having that learning space for them as well, rather than having to find a space in the hallway that's gonna be quiet, which can be a challenge at times. Additional classroom space, once again, accommodating that full-day kindergarten, moving early learners to Ames, and that will actually be able to benefit the entire district, which you'll see as we continue to show the other buildings. New media library, new media center library, separation of play and parking, because right now, we are playing in the parking lot, and, you know, I have staff that buy new cars when they can, and they will have, come in and say, "My mirror just got torn off my car by kickball." And it's pretty much park at your own risk, so we, and that's, you know, we're looking at cars, and we're also talking about kids and the supervision of children when they go in between cars and trying to navigate staff backing out at certain times of the day and making sure the kids aren't out there when staff have to leave, because we have traveling staff in the district. So, that is, that's really something huge that we were able to take care of with these new plans, is the separation of those two activities of parking and play, ADA compliance, and then just overall, you know, improvements, and what a fitting way to, in the Ames presentation, and those three words again, you know, congregation, circulation, and storage. And hopefully, you got to see that as we went through the plans.
If you want to make any questions, comments about Ames, you want to go through all four schools, and then, any comments?
I don't know what you want to do, if I want to handle it. It seemed like more natural to...
Yeah. Yeah, it'd be hard to wait.
Okay.
Just a couple of questions. First of all, or a couple of comments as well. One, I like the way you do the brick. I think that's very interesting, and to tie in with what's existing. I also like the east side, the details on the east side, those like columns you've got there. So, the white, if you look at like the cap on the top of the roof, that, I assume that's limestone, is that right? And that's matching the original?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Try to keep that banding consistent, as well as those pilasters, the columns.
Right. Yeah. And then, on the west side, second floor, you don't have the wraparound windows there. Why is, why is that?
Because we needed a teaching wall, and that as a, I don't wanna call it a service drive, but as a drive entrance, that made sense for that, for that wall to be the teaching wall. So, that happens on the other side as well, on the lower level. It was, it was just a function of the room.
Okay. And then, last question, as on the library, I know that was just sort of a schematic, but it does seem like kind of light on bookshelves. I mean, I assume you're gonna have the same number of books that...
Yeah, we're providing actually more than they have in their current stacks, and then, and obviously, some flexibility on top of that, but yeah.
Great.
Yeah. I had a question about the upstairs as well. Trying to remember what you called the room, that large, I don't remember, but was there, is that, yeah, upstairs, is there access for water, and let's say they wanted to teach a science lesson and those kinds of things? What kinds of options do the teachers have on the second floor if they're in an itinerant space to engage in any kind of interdisciplinary activity?
Sure. Two would be the floor plan. So, there's a direct connection to the existing school.
Yeah.
On the second floor, there's not water in that addition. So, I don't know if that's a short answer to your question, but there is...
Yeah, I was just, because I saw the picture of the wall with the cabinetry, and sometimes the cabinets here at Hauser and Central will have water. I was just curious to see what they, what possibilities they might have. I mean, it's not the end of the world. I was just wondering if they had access.
Sure. Right now, I mean, we're just, they're secondary classrooms, so, I mean, if that need was there, that's something we explored.
I have an answer.
Would they just change rooms with someone?
Well, what we would be doing is, when we look at our, one of our, our special education resource teacher is currently in a room that was adjacent to the old art room at Ames, which is on the first floor, which is now a kindergarten room, which is a room that was used for, you know, it could be used for STEM science, it has a sink in it, it has one.
Right, because it has a sink in there.
So, that is literally going to be feet away from the new addition. So, that space will open up when that teacher...
Yeah, I'm sure you could change. I was just curious, because it's hard to tell in the drawing what...
Exactly, right. But that would be an excellent, excellent room to use for what you, you know, if I put, if intermediate classrooms are going on that second floor, that's easy access to get to that particular room.
Do you still have the kiln?
We still have the kiln.
Are you gonna keep the kiln?
The kiln's moving.
Is it moving?
It's moving. The kiln is moving.
Okay.
Second floor.
Second floor. It'll be on the second floor.
Yeah, I would be sad to see it go, so that would be...
No, we still have the kiln.
No, I also like the brick. I think it's lovely, a nice nod to the existing.
I don't, I don't have a question. I just wanted, I'm sure it's already said, but I just wanted to state that in these plans, that one classroom that has no windows is no longer a classroom.
Good point.
So, that was, that is something that is taken care of in those plans, so there's no, like, general ed classroom, or, you know, like, your classroom space that is enclosed.
It's interesting to navigate, because yes, that classroom was, at one point, a fourth-grade teacher's classroom for three years, and then when I hired a new fifth-grade teacher, she gets to go in there, so it's sort of like low man on the toilet, a little woman on the toilet, but gets to go in the classroom, no windows, which is not the best learning environment for students, especially when you're talking about Indian students being cooped up in a classroom. It's not the largest room either, so it's, yes, so it's a great point.
I just wanted to make that point, and that music and art have dedicated spaces now, which are not a part of the, you know, there, those spaces are being renovated, but they're not a part of the addition, but I just wanted to make sure that it was very clear that those are dedicated spaces. There's no classroom.
Yeah, every classroom...
Classroom without windows, which is, I can imagine, a big deal for them.
Absolutely. Every self-contained classroom will have windows. There will be itinerant spaces, of course, that do not have windows.
Right, but that's not where it's trying to spend the...
This isn't where children are living for six and a half hours on Sunday.
On the topic of windows, I remember there were windows on the north side of the gym.
Correct.
I assume they're gonna be covered.
They are gonna be covered. And so, we just, we did light studies of that gymnasium to make sure that the light levels are appropriate, since we knew we were taking away some, some natural light, given the functions that were going on in there and what we were providing in the addition, we felt comfortable doing that, so, but yes, those openings would go away.
Did you consider, like, adding windows on the, on the west side, in that big blank wall that sort of...
We did consider that. That's not something that we ended up doing, but, I mean, that's a good point.
I have a silly teacher question. Let's say you're in the learning stair, the cool learning stair. How's the sound issue, if you're like in the media center? Do you feel like there's, you know, the carpet will absorb sound, so you could have multiple groups going at the same time? I mean, I would assume so, but...
Yeah, we've done quite a few of these learning stairs. This would be one of the smaller ones. So, the ceiling would be acoustically treated, and so you've got that, and, you know, it really, it does kind of isolate within that space, so, I mean, it's, obviously, it's open, but, you know, there would be some programming and coordination, but, yeah, I mean, it is.
It's very cool, though. It's innovative, and at least it's got...
We've done them in quite a few other schools, and they've been great success. I mean, whether it's a presentation or just impromptu kids hanging... I mean, whether it's a presentation or just impromptu kids hanging out, they've always been well-used.
Thanks.
One other thing I just wanted to comment on, just because I want to. First of all, I love the use of color in the spaces. It's really refreshing and exciting, because our schools tend to be a bit white. The walls are white, everything's white, so I think it's just a refreshing change. I also love, and I love the story that you guys told about how, like, having Ames on the wall, like, having a sense of identity, that that kind of came from the students, that the students in their focus groups said that, you know, they have spirit days, they have all this, but you walk into a school and you don't know your names. So you'll see as it travels throughout the other schools, too. I just think that's a really simple, yet like very effective, and directly led by students, which is very cool, so.
Absolutely. And it's something that we gave a lot of thought to in terms of what color was where, and that did come from the visioning. And what we attempted to do, and I think we're successful in doing, is developing a palette. So once, you know, you can take that now into the existing school, that same palette, and bring some color and energy into the rest of the building.
And we are going to continue to bring that, you know, climate and culture piece in with our PBSs, positive behavior student supports, our dolphin waving, respectful responsible, safe. We're going to put some murals up in that multipurpose room. So you saw that Ames on the bottom right-hand side, but when working with the design team, they said, "What else do you want in there? What do you want to bring in there that makes it feel like this is the student's home?"
That's great.
Since we were at a school safety seminar, some of us today, Todd Keshmer and Chrissy Mullins with us, and they talked about that at the school's safety seminar, about kids having a connection to their building, feeling a sense of belonging, sort of name and school spirit and all those things. It's, you know, really important just for overall mental health and even sort of a deterrent to negative things happening in a building when kids have that sense of connection of belonging. So it feels minor, but I think it's very significant.
Yeah, no, and I think our teachers, our administrators, and our PTAs and PTOs do such a good job of, like, generating the spirit and the spirit days and all the, you know, the different culture of every school. I just think it's just a nice little way to put it together, and it's just, I was just shocked at how simple it was, but then more I thought about how just incredibly effective it is, too, for me, so.
It's really amazing to watch this come to life. I mean, three years ago, I think we sat down, maybe two years ago, with our student focus groups and got some input from them, our teacher focus group, our Ames Visioning Committee, and it's here. I mean, we're seeing it in the picture. We've got bits and pieces of it woven throughout in all the plans.
I know, it's exciting for, at least from when we first came on the board, and we had originally just thought, "Oh, it would be very cool, because we're so crowded," and when it became, it's very nice for someone like me who came on and just finally get to see what it looks like. So, and I remember taking a tour with you and the teachers, and so, yeah, I hope it works.
You were on the visioning committee, so you were seeing this.
For the staff, yeah, and the children.
And something else to recognize, that with the Alfred DLAs before, this isn't just a rehash of, or just a repeat of those original concept designs. This is, various spaces and uses have moved around in this space to make it more efficient and to address some of Todd's needs. And there's, I can see where items have moved around to, well, they've been refined. It's not just adding detail, it's really adding your professional thoughts to refine this design and make it something that we want.
Yeah, we've kind of tried to touch everybody in terms of the administration and the staff and get all the input, because you guys live with it, and it's about you and not us. So we tried to make those tweaks and those adjustments as we kind of navigated through the project together.
So next, Blythe Park. So Keshmer Gorman, our principal there, will join Ryan now to talk about Blythe Park.
Hello, board members. Thanks for having me up here. I'm happy to be here with Ryan and to share some of the renovation ideas for Blythe Park. I think the two biggest ideas when we started the process and now finally here, obviously were the secured front entrance, but that's the same across all the elementary schools. The other one was creating a multi-section opportunity for Blythe Park, and having a lot of conversations, a lot of research, a lot of discussions among staff and with my admin colleagues. We just know the benefits, that the additional fluidity among students and the additional collaborative opportunities for both students and staff, that they provide such a significant benefit to just the overall educational climate and culture and the academic and social growth of the students. And so that was a big goal for our renovation, so it's not in the same scale as Ames, but I would say our renovation's a pretty important one. By doing that and providing a multi-section option for Blythe, you alleviate the overcrowding at the other schools, which obviously benefits the entire district. But then at the same time, when we were doing the renovation, we were still keeping in mind the idea of, like, making sure we had enough itinerant spaces and that we were keeping the multipurpose room, and so the functionality of Blythe Park could continue and that we would still have the same ample space to educate students as we are now, but just in an improved way. And so, I would say basically that's overview of what we're going to be doing with Blythe Park, and I'm going to hand it over to Ryan to talk about the specifics.
Thank you. So Blythe Park's a very interesting school. While all of the schools in the district have their own unique and important architectural character, Blythe Park is on the historic landmark registry. So we had to take a very careful thought in how we would add on to and change this building. So what you're seeing here is not the first iteration, it's one of many that we went through with Historic District Commission in refining. What was important originally about this architecture, I'll be brief, but it was really about the three masses of the building and then these connectors that connect those three masses. So how do we complement that and how do we add on to that in a thoughtful way? But still achieving the goals that Keshmer just mentioned. This is the existing image that I'm sure you're all familiar with, the main entrance. So how do we add on to this and create a secured entrance, but still be respectful of the existing architecture? So what was important about that main entrance is, and was one of the founding principles of the architecture and design, was transparency through that connector. So keeping that continuous glass facade across there and being able to see beyond into the garden. So we pulled out a little bit from that connector to create space for a secured entrance, and then still being able to see through that connector was obviously important. Maintaining those heights was also very important. This is a rendering of what the finished design would be. Again, very similar in terms of the architecture, keeping the same windows, the same brick, and keeping that consistent glass facade, but creating that secured entrance. The other piece that we looked at, and it was important to the school and the district, was adding another classroom. Again, this is kind of a final iteration, but we ended up looking at doing, and I'm going to jump to the next slide here, and I'll come back to the floor plan, is continuing that mass of the classroom at southwest corner. So what's interesting and great about Blythe Park is that those masses where the classrooms exist have clear-story windows, so you've got high ceilings, you've got natural light coming in there. And then the corridors have much shorter ceilings for the circulation. So how do we continue that? And so what we ended up doing and coming to was an extension of that classroom mass to add that additional classroom. I'm going to go back to the floor plan here quickly. In the front there, we've got really an office suite that brings a secured entrance up to the front, the principal's office that was previously in the back here, and then also conference table here, and a nurse's office with an accessible bathroom. So really now you've got a point to accept people into the school, deal with kids that are sick, have a conference room, have teacher conferences, or teacher and parent conferences if necessary. So it really gives not only a nice entry that's architecturally respected or respectful of the school, but also gives you all the functionality that you need at the front of the building. So as we look to the rear, where the classroom addition would be, what that offers us the opportunity to do was create a breakout space, really something they had previously, but here, this shared space in between these two classrooms. So be able to create some visibility through there with some glass, but it gives a place for teachers to either have a one-on-one with a student while still having visibility, or for students to go into that room and do some, you know, some personal learning. On the outside, what we look to do is, something that's important to the Historic District Commission, is that you do something that's respectful, but not, that doesn't replicate the architecture. So what we wanted to do here was take a different material. The existing building is all brick. So we wanted to take a different material that we found on the inside, which is a wood paneling, and use that on the outside in a way to signify, again, a different type of learning that's happening, more progressive type of learning, Blythe Park of today and where it's headed, but then also be respectful of the existing architecture. So this was well-received by the Historic Preservation Commission, and we think that it accents the building nicely. It's just another view of the garden, that transparency through the connector that you can kind of see on the left there, and then the addition and the classroom, pardon me, with the clear stories above that would bring that natural light into the classroom. So just another view of the existing entry. And we went through, a lot of conversations about this. We had to pull back a little bit on the addition in the front, which offered some challenges on the interior. So what we chose to do is open up the glass on the inside. So what was important to Keshmer and the district and really the way Blythe Park is today, is that it's open and it's inviting. So how do we do that and still create that secured entrance? So we still have the separation between the existing secured vestibule, but then on the left there, as you see, I can get the rhythm of my pointer there, that would be a sliding window that would open to the corridor. So that then becomes sort of the congregation space for people coming into the school once they've been cleared. This is an interior shot of the classroom. Again, continuing with that clear-story design, bringing natural light into the building, something, that palette that I talked about before in terms of color, but also in terms of ritable surfaces, magnetic surfaces. All of these cabinets would be ritable and magnetic, so it gives another place for learning to happen, impromptu learning and really more progressive type of learning. Something that we'll look at probably later on would be the furniture. So different types of furniture, more flexible seating also encourages that progressive learning.
So just to recap, I mean, now that, with the addition of the classroom, that now opens Blythe up to have potential to be a two-section school with maintaining the half-day kindergarten option still. Early learners are early learners that we love, and they're wonderful, and we'd be sad to see them go, but we know that they would be going over to Ames into a beautiful new space that would be designed specifically for them. So that's wonderful. The addition of the one new classroom, and, you know, like Ryan said, just going through different versions of that secured front entrance, but, you know, coming up with something that is still very inviting, yet, you know, keeps security at a priority and, you know, allows for just the positive interactions and community feels to still be maintained at Blythe. So I hope that you like what was proposed.
Any questions?
I'll just make my comment. I never would have expected the wood paneling siding on the exterior, and I think it's great. I just, I think it's such a, I mean, it's going to be so small, such a small part of the building, but it's just kind of unexpected, but yet you look at it and it looks like life. It looks like walking through the school, you know, like...
Just that.
It's just a really nice connection from the interior to the exterior. I really wasn't expecting that when you mentioned it back in the committee meeting. And I, the more I look at it, and the more I think about it, I just, it makes sense. It just feels like, it feels like life to me, so.
And it's funny you say that, because some of the staff members that saw the presentation go on, they absolutely loved it, and they love the same thing. They're like, "We love the wood," and it's just because it just captures what the interior looks like.
Yeah, you walk through life and that's what you think about. So it's just a neat way to capture the, you know, like, the life of the school, so.
What kind of wood is it?
It's actually, it's not a wood, it's going to be a phenolic panel. So we'll install it, to get it technical, that is a rain screen system, and it'll have a shiplab installation to it. But, so it has a timber veneer, and it looks like wood. It's all individual wood, but it wears much better and has a longer life.
And it was something that the Historic Preservation received really well. I mean, that through the meetings that Ryan and Steve presented there, that was, there was a lot of enthusiasm. I've learned a lot about architecture along the way through this process, and that idea of, as you say, the, you know, sympathetic but not replicating the previous design.
Yeah, it was important to us that we brought that to the Preservation Commission, because it is a more modern material. We looked at using the same brick, but really at the request of the committee, that, you know, we not replicate, but, you know, are sympathetic to it, and that seemed to make sense for us.
And to your point, Martha, Brian and DLA really worked well with preservation in that the secured front entrance still maintains this openness and this clarity that you've got those three separate spaces that Blythe has now and still adds what we wanted, but maintains that kind of the historic and the features that made the building what it originally was and don't detract from that at all, so.
Yeah, and I think that half that deal, that DLA was wonderful, working with us about that secure front entrance, and just even talking through, like, furniture options and just ways to make it feel like warm and inviting and, you know, just despite all the changes that would have to be made to create a secure front entrance, to just make sure it still had that homey feel to it. So it was a really nice experience working with them.
I have one question about the, we recently had work done on the roof, as you know. How will you blend those pieces and maintain the integrity of the new work that was done?
Essentially, we peel it back.
Is it just an overlap on...
No, we peel it back and we tie it in. You know, it's something that we do quite often. So we do it in a way that wouldn't affect the existing warranty.
Right, that's what I'm asking.
That's part of how it's...
Because it was not cheap.
Yeah, no, I know, I know. And it's something that we didn't take lightly, because actually we did that project.
Right, I know, I know, I know. So I was thinking, okay, we just put it on, and it happens to it.
So we, it's given a lot of thought to that. So we would maintain the existing warranty and use the same type of roofing.
Okay, great.
Just on the topic of the two-section Blythe, so this would give you, I guess, 11 classrooms plus a multipurpose room, is that right?
Yes.
So is multipurpose room then would be used for lunch and for art and music and all that for...
Not music.
If going down a few years where if we had the two sections and the half-day kindergarten, yes. So that would be for art, and then music would be in the other room, where it is currently.
Where it is currently, okay. Okay.
And that's one of the things we've talked about, right? And it will take us several years to roll up into a two-section school at Blythe, and we do think our enrollment patterns right now are very much supporting that. You know, we've talked about some additional renovation at Blythe down the road, so we really, when you count rooms, you're at two sections, assuming half-day kindergarten.
Right.
And with the other building, we've talked about, like, let's assume full-day kindergarten now, and we're not there yet, right? As a district, even if you did full day, you still have to offer a half-day option to families that might prefer that. So, you know, we would think about things like, should Blythe be the half-day option if people wanted that? Or do you have to do something about the multipurpose room, which then is just, I know, creating a problem that we're trying to undo at our other schools? But, you know, I think there is a question of several years from now, there needs to be some additional renovation at Blythe. I think, you know, not necessarily adding another classroom, but that, you know, is there a way to renovate the auditorium? We've done some very minor revisions there, moving some rows of seats, et cetera, so it feels pretty comfortable as a music teaching space right now. I mean, it really does, but, you know, is there a way to make it even more, more functional for other large group learning opportunities that need it? I think that's one of those questions that's still, like, not fully resolved in our plan.
Right, and so, and because it's not fully resolved, and we really don't know what the next few years are going to bring, I think just the renovation plan for right now is what it should be, you know, just taking in, like, how is this renovation going to impact the district, and then looking a few years down the line and seeing, you know, where does Blythe stand at that point.
Yeah, I know, we had heard from families that would not want to lose the auditorium. Yeah, I know, we had heard from families that would not want to lose the auditorium at Blythe Park, and so we did renovations, so I am happy to see that, that it functions for the people that actually attend there and they use it for things, so appreciated that you were considering that.
Onto Central. Keith Gatz gets to join Ryan Kelly now.
It's a common theme up here. Okay, so as we started looking at things with Central, I think the, the parent community as well as the staff and, and the board as well is aware that one of the largest concerns we've had with the building for the longest time has been the secured front entrance. And I think the proposed renovations address that directly and hopefully ensure that it's a much more secure place on a daily basis for students and for staff and for visitors. The renovations account for existing itinerant spaces and the needs that are available to that, along with student support areas, appropriate number of classrooms inclusive of the possible full-day kindergarten down the road, a place to eat and conduct large group spaces, there's a multipurpose room that's proposed within this plan that's as part of the old district office space, which kind of leads to that leveraging of the new property acquisitions by the district office, moving to its location on Harlem Avenue. It's provided us with space in the interim right now that'll be repurposed for, for a multipurpose room space moving forward, that alleviates some of the overcrowding pieces across the district schools. Hopefully it'll prevent us at Central from having to go to four sections at a grade level for a while. I think that's, that's just a gain for everybody as we start to look at the spaces that are available and what's kind of a, you know, confined structure through the age of the building. Staying away from four sections is a, is a, is a positive for the building and for the district. And then obviously looking with La Cota Group at the separation of play and parking, and that's an ongoing piece for Central, the Central Hauser campus that's, you know, still in the process and works, but it's something we're very well aware of and are working on right now.
Central is also a very interesting school, also on the Historic Landmark Registry. So looking at how to, one, provide a secure entrance into the building that is accessible came with quite a few challenges. The main entrance enters on the first floor, which is about nine feet up, as I'm sure you're all familiar with, and very beautiful symmetrical ramps that go below the main stair. So looking at different options and talking through with Facilities Committee about what made the most sense and talking through with Pete, we came to a conclusion which we felt was the best solution, and what we are doing is creating a ramp, which isn't a ramp, but a sloped sidewalk, an accessible sidewalk. So we're able to take that underneath the stair and then by adding, jump to the, by adding an elevator in the interior courtyard, we then are able to make this building accessible and still be referential to the existing architecture and the geometry of the front entrance. So this is the existing entrance with the ramps heading down, as you can see. This would be the new image of the secured accessible entrance with the walkway heading out to the sidewalk. Offering a cross connection there, which is something that had been in discussion, but really the feeling and spending time at Central, seeing how people walk through the site, this seemed to make sense just, just for normal travel, so there's that cross connection sidewalk there. As Pete mentioned, now that the district has moved out of this area, it offered the opportunity for a multipurpose room for lunch, for congregation, for teaching, and so the challenge was to look at this and see how we fit the number of kids that we need to in here comfortably. The other challenge that we had with this was to provide the hot lunch that currently exists at Central. So right now, they, they currently go down to Hauser for hot lunch, and so we wanted to bring that, that amenity up here. And so what we've created is here, a serving line, food would still come from Hauser, but it would come in in hot cabinets and it would be hot served here. We're able to do that in a limited way that is not creating another kitchen, but maximizes the space. So the elevator that I mentioned before is here in the courtyard. You're only getting part of the plan, but your accessible entrance comes down this ramp into the elevator and then up to the first floor, which we'll get to in just a moment. So we are adding two ramps in this building to create that secured entrance, and that created a few other challenges that we had to address in terms of the classrooms.
So that lower level, the first one, since we've been referring to, is actually the ADA entrance for the building. So anybody who needs accessibility for, due to physical handicaps will be able, or whatever reason, will be able to access the building on that level under the ramps that are added into that hallway and the elevator that will reach all levels of the building and provides for accessibility that doesn't exist in the current structure.
So here you're seeing that secured entrance on the lower level, which is actually below that, that stair. So you come in and here, as Pete mentioned, and then down this ramp and then the elevator further down the corridor, which again reaches all levels of the, of the building. Another, touch on this kind of briefly, but another thing that we had to address was coat hooks in the hall created an accessibility issue with the handrails. So really looking at all of the effects of this and looking at ways to bring those coat hooks into the classrooms and really looking at the total solution that made sense for the teacher and, and for the, the school.
That was one of those interesting ones that seemed like such a minor thing, but it's actually an ADA issue when coats overhang a handrail on a ramp, so that was something we had to, had to address in the plan.
Well, and it was, you know, it was evaluating how they work today and what impacts our proposed design was going to have, and if there were additional things we needed to address, then we wanted to obviously do that throughout the process. This is a view of the multipurpose room. Again, this would be lunchroom, accessible bathrooms, and then when lunch is not happening, it's congregation space, it's, it's teaching space, place for gross motor if necessary, but again, offers some flexibility for the school in a larger meeting, meeting area. The other piece of this was the secured entrance, and again, you'll see some similarities here to Blythe Park, but this is really an office suite. Your elevator is here, so your secured entrance would be back up this ramp on the first floor to the office, or obviously up the stairs and into the office would be the check-in point. There you have not only a workroom for teachers, but then an adjacent nurse's office. So again, creating that office suite, creating that, that check-in point for parents, for kids who may be sick and really any things that may become up throughout the day at the front entrance of that school.
And I think for the Central parents that are here, you can't get into the building without going through the office anymore. I think that's been a key point to, to people that are here and that are watching tonight, that, you know, in the current structure, you actually enter the building before you actually get into the office, and so that's being eliminated. And moving the nurse's off, office up closer to the office, you don't have to walk the maze and actually into Hauser campus to get your child if they're sick. So that's another significant upgrade to what we're currently dealing with.
So is if I find a way to centralize, make things flexible, and then look at the additional spaces. Currently the office is here, as Pete mentioned, you come in and you're already into the school before you go to the office, so flicking those made sense. That now becomes a classroom that was at the front of the building, and then your secured entrance and office suite is at the front of the building as well, with good visibility for people coming into the building. This is a view of that, that secured entrance. Something that you'll notice here, that you'll, you've seen in Blythe Park and you'll see at Hollywood is the signage. We talked about that at Ames, the identification that this is Central, I mean, ownership, letting the kids know that this is their school. And then finding ways to tie in, and we've identified what the red is, but this isn't it. It's the school colors, and so, you know, there's, there's spirit there, there's, you know, an ownership of their school. So that you'll see in all the offices at Central as well as Blythe Park and Hollywood. This is just a further iteration of some of the process that we went through in dealing with the coat hooks and how we looked at bringing those in the classroom. And it wasn't as simple to put coat hooks on the wall, how do we make those functional? How do we make those a teaching tool for the kids? How can we incorporate color? All of these upper cabinets would be ritable, magnetic surfaces, so again, it's another spot for learning. It solves a functional problem that we had, so it was working with Pete and understanding how the teachers work and finding a functional solution. This is an area that is below the gym that has the opportunity for some added itinerant spaces and ATPT. So this is something that we would renovate and kind of split up into three smaller rooms, which is currently one large room, and it just gives the opportunity for more flexible itinerant space and, and learning for kids. And this is just the second floor. The only additions here would be the elevator, but the elevator does, does go up to that floor as well, so all stops. And then the third floor, the same, elevator goes up to the third floor. I think this is currently offices right now, but it has the opportunity for some conference rooms or, or itinerant spaces possibly.
Circling back through everything, obviously the, the multipurpose room space, and I think it's nothing to not be missed here, is it also frees the tie between the Hauser and Central schedules in terms of shared lunch space. They're now separate, which gives Hauser flexibility to their schedule and to their lunch hour that they have not had in, as long as I know. So that's, that's a win for Hauser as well, they actually are gaining from this as well. The addition, the additional itinerant small group spaces, ADA, accessibility to a portion of the building that was not accessible before, secured front entrance, nurse's office closer to the, to the main office, the elevator that gives accessibility to all four floors of the building. And master schedule right now, my lunchtime, my lunch hour for my staff and students does not match the other three elementary schools because of the tie to the Hauser schedule. Now that that's undone, it allows for more collaborative time between staff across buildings, so there's, there's a win in that as well.
So I have one question, and I think we had discussed this at the committee meeting. So that space under the gym that's going to be itinerant, it's really loud there, so you guys are addressing?
We are addressing that, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was said out loud. Because if you've ever been down there, you know it's not like ideal learning.
No, you can hear the kids running and, because it's a PE class.
Yeah, so in order to make that functional.
They used to have band leaders in there.
Yeah, the original problem to, to solve, but the added itinerant rooms, yes, we are addressing that.
Yeah.
That's always really helpful to our goal, like, we knew we were trying to get all of our small group learning spaces in the right kind of spaces, and somewhere midway through this process, I think it occurred to everybody that that space under the gym at Central is really a nice amount of space, it just was lost some functionality because of the sound, so fixing it for the sound attenuation, I wonder if that's the word we call it.
I didn't know that word.
Yeah, well, it'll make a big difference, and there's some minor renovation down there too, just with some wall configurations, right, so.
What about the sound from the elevator and the peripheral classroom or two?
It's, the type of elevator that we're putting in, it's called a machine roomless, so all of the mechanics are underneath the car.
What do we have at Hauser now? Do you know? Does anyone know what we have now?
All the mechanics are underneath the-
Yeah, it's quiet.
It's quiet? Good, good. Yeah, we talked about that too, because there's a teacher space next to the elevator here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We often use that type of elevator, just because of, one, it saves on space, and two, mechanical room can be very loud.
I only ask them because I taught next to an elevator and it was really loud, and a photocopy room was worse. I had a question about like that itinerary space under the gym and some of the, since you're taking the classroom on the main floor, they have beautiful woodwork in there, are there going to be any attempts to preserve the woodwork or cabinetry? Because it looks fairly flushed out. Yes.
Some of the cabinetry, yes. Some of it, because a lot of it, when we looked at it, it was, shelves were broken and things like that, we chose to replace it.
Yeah.
So where we can, we're keeping the wood floors. It was a discussion of, we're going to affect some cabinetry, how do we deal with the floors if we keep them?
Yeah, some of those are gorgeous.
Yeah, they are, and so we're keeping those and we're able to do that. Some of the cabinetry that we felt was past its years.
How many students can now fit in each of the multipurpose rooms? I mean, I mean, how many for like, for like lunch? I mean, how many, how many would be able to be accommodated?
Between the two spaces.
Between the two spaces.
The capacity that we looked at was trying to aim for seating for around just under 200 kids.
So you'd have two, too much sessions?
So we have enough, we looked at that, I did what's based on splits and grade levels where we currently are, that we, it is doable. It is doable with space, and that's why we looked at it a couple times and changed configurations and removed some things, and Steve and Ryan went back and looked at it multiple times and really worked with me as well, with Judy from the food service, to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the kitchen as well for whatever they needed to do in that space, so we did. She was brought into discussions as well. I, I do have to say, I did, worked on opening a brand-new building in the district I came from many years ago, and it was not as involved a process in, in terms of getting and garnering input from staff, from administrators in that process. What Ryan and Steve and Mackenzie have done over the last couple of months is far and away above anything I would have expected, and their responsiveness and just getting back to us and having us involved and asking our input and thoughts and spending time with us to make sure that these plans are going to not only meet the needs currently, but down the road for long-term purposes, is commendable. It's, it's fantastic and it's been a pleasure and very easy to work with them. I don't want that to be, to go unknown to you.
I must say one other thing about the hot lunch, because they actually, the lunch, serving hot lunch in the Central multipurpose, the new Central multipurpose room really was a huge project. I know there were a lot, a lot of conversations, and at the very beginning of our process, we, we started with that equity parity lens, and one of the things that we talked about, I think at one of our very first meetings, is that we don't have hot lunch at the other elementaries. And so one way was to consider, should we do hot lunch at the other elementaries? And we decided, no, that there were a lot of space and configuration and cost needs, et cetera, associated with that, and therefore, should we take it away from Central? And that was another point of conversation, and we felt that that didn't seem like the right thing to do either, especially when we have a fully functional kitchen, just, that's really just a few feet away or yards away. Granted, it's from upstairs and downstairs, it's a little complicated, but we, you know, we made a, a very specific decision to continue to serve hot lunch to the Central students, given this campus and the kitchen setup on this campus. So if people were wondering about that, I think it just sort of bears that extra comment.
Can you reiterate about the coat hooks and how they'd be teachable spaces? I'm just trying to picture what that means.
Well, the coat hooks may not be, but-
I've been, my daughter's in one of those downstairs classrooms right now, and they're small, so I'm trying to figure out what do you mean by the coat hooks? I know a lot of parents that would wonder that too.
Well, we try to do with all of our locker and cubbies, when, when they're going into pre-K or early learners, is each one would have a color. So the teachable space is like, Johnny, you're a blue, Sally, you're a yellow. So that, that kind of teachable space, or I guess a teachable space or a teachable tool. But the upper cabinets, and the surface instead of being a wood grain or a plastic laminate, it's a ritable surface, it's also magnetic. So we often do that, and that's, here again can be another learning space, so.
So the coats and everything are enclosed in a cabinet, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so they're actually open, and these are hard to see here, but, so these are all coat hooks here in cubbies, and then you would have upper cabinets above. So containing them, offering a space for them to put their boots and their coats, a spot for them to have a little sort of mailbox for their personal effects, or if they have things to take home. Then upper cabinets, they could be for teacher storage, and then having that ritable surface, it can also be that, we call it a teaching tool.
Do I have this right, that currently there's lower storage, but no upper storage? So basically you've inverted that space?
Correct, it's a combination of lower storage and then some wardrobes, like tall-
Yes, I was trying to figure that out, where does the teacher stuff go?
Yeah, so there are some wardrobes that you-
So you've inverted it, okay.
Where you don't see in these drawings, but there are two wardrobes for teachers, one for teacher personal effects and one for storage.
Okay.
I wonder, you, you mentioned that a couple times about that special surface, I'm wondering about the maintenance of it or the life of it? Is that something that's going to need to be resurfaced at some point in time, or?
No, I mean, we've used it and it's, I mean, it's, it's held up very well, and we haven't had any issues with it in terms of maintenance. No, we haven't had any issues.
I guess one more question in regards to the multipurpose room. I didn't see a dotted line underneath outlining the pool. I'm assuming that's structurally addressed as part of this and-
Yeah, we're going to fill in the pool.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't mention that.
Sorry to anyone who was dreaming of having the pool there again one day.
Well, I didn't want to get too far in the weeds of that construction. But yes, we are going to fill in the pool. So what you see would be new concrete slab and then filled-in pool. So, yeah.
Any questions or comments about Central? We'll move on to Hollywood. Kim Hafter gets to join right. Kelly, you're at the microphone.
Thank you all for getting us to this point. Like all the other buildings, and like Martha said, I think a really strong point of all of this is that we set goals, and we've been very intentional about the construction in serving students and our learning communities. Hollywood from this will end up with a secured front entrance. It will account for the first time in the school's history. It will account for all existing itinerants and student support personnel. We would have an appropriate number of classrooms, and we would have space for full-day kindergarten if that were to happen. We would have a place to eat, conduct large group projects. It would be a multipurpose room. In addition to large group projects and eating, we would also have indoor recess there. Music would be there, and it would provide a space for our orchestra. And also, it would alleviate overcrowding for the most part. We know that Hollywood, depending upon the population, will continue to have high class sizes because it will always be a single-section school. But this provides for learning spaces for all of our classes, and it will separate play and parking.
Start with the multipurpose room. At Hollywood, as Kim had mentioned, we really had two goals, to create sort of a multipurpose, flexible room, and then also a secured entrance. Here, we've chosen to place that at the back of the building, using a similar, which is not extremely evident from this image, but a similar architecture in terms of the pitch of the roof that happens at the gym in the front of the building. Offering some windows here to continue that natural light, to create that connection to the outdoors, which is, you know, important to learning. I'll go to the plan. So that would function as their lunchroom, as well as, something that came evident a little bit down the road was, this would be a good opportunity for music to be in this space when lunch is not happening. So that was an added challenge of working with Kim and looking at their existing music room and talking to the district. And so we were able to manipulate this plan to provide storage for the instruments, added acoustics that would make it a workable music room, but then still be enough open space to have as a multipurpose lunchroom. So you see that here. My clicker died. There we go. So you see that here. Storage would be along here and as well as the east wall. And then obviously, the rest would be open for multipurpose and lunchroom. Secured entrance would be at the front of the building. Again, similar theme that we're trying to replicate at some of the other schools, where you come into the building at the front, you're immediately into the office, you're buzzed in there, so it's a secured entrance point. And then if you're cleared, you're released into the school. Here, what we have here, Hollywood has the unique challenge of having their nurses' station already set up across the hall. So we chose to not include that in the office suite, but instead provide a workroom for the teachers. And then to the left there would be the principal's office. Providing access outside or through the workroom would get you to the nurses' station. What we are providing, though, is a cot at the front. So if there is a child that's sick or doesn't feel well that's getting picked up, there would be sort of a secluded private space for them to have just sort of another waiting area. The former office is now going to become an itinerant room. So creating work surface along that wall gives personal storage for itinerant teachers, somewhere for them to come and learn and teach collaboratively. And then the office, which was previously the principal's office, now becomes a small group learning room. So there, they can have one-on-one with parents, with children, or just, you know, simply have conference space for the staff. You want to add there? Similar to what we've done at Blythe and Central, we wanted to create some signage here. We got identification, so there's ownership that feels like Hollywood, that there are certain things about it that they identify as Hollywood. You get the colors and the signage. So you'll see that at the front entrance. This would be the added workroom for the teachers and the staff, and then access directly to the nurses across the hallway there. This is an interior view of the multipurpose room. Again, looking at this as a fun space, it's a colorful space, a place where kids want to, one, have music and be interactive. Obviously, lunch is very interactive, so it needs to be big and large. But then looking at acoustics, how do we deal with acoustics, not only for lunch, which can be loud, but also music? So we're providing acoustic sound attenuation and paneling along the wall. Below, we're providing storage all the way along that wall for instruments. Those are also ritable, projectable surfaces. So again, that's another teaching tool or another teaching place. You know, that can be used for teaching or for presentation, and just gives, you know, some added flexibility. Again, natural light, sort of activate the space, create that connection with the outside was an important thing here. Again, just another view. At the front, we would provide some cabinetry that would be trash enclosure, some storage for lunchroom-specific handwashing stations, and then place for milk cooler, things like that that would be either, they're permanently are brought in just for lunch at that time.
One of the things I'd like to add about this multipurpose room is the addition of this and moving music there gives each class a space. And we know that in education, the classroom is the second teacher in the room. People post anchor charts, learning tools, all over the classroom that students learn to refer to and that help solidify their knowledge in their content area. Just as we work best in our offices, we set up our offices with all of our reference materials around us, that if we need to have class in another type of environment, we are in some aspects at a deficit. It's, the same is true with what Hollywood has been dealing with for a number of years, is the classes that end up in the hallway or on the stage or in other non-classroom areas, because we lack space currently. Also in this space, we are, again, a one-section school, and because the children are together from kindergarten through fifth grade, they become like siblings, and they really need to learn to interact with different children in different grade levels. And so we intentionally put children in environments where they're with children in other classrooms. So this space will provide a space for us to do that more frequently. Currently, we, our only options to do that are when the gym is not in use for PE or band or indoor recess or lunch or, you know, sometimes physical therapy and other things. So this space is really essential to opening up a lot of options for Hollywood students
This is just another axonometric view of those floor plans. On the right, you'll see the multipurpose room. Yeah, again, the congregation space and place for lunch. And on the left there, the secured entrance office, that brings all of those functions in that office suite to the front of the building in order to receive people into the building in a secure way.
So the big gains that we have through this plan, we get a secure front entrance. That's huge in providing safety for our learning community. We also get a multipurpose room that would be used for indoor recess as well as orchestra, music, large group space. We would get the itinerant people in an appropriate learning environment where they can be collaborative around student needs. In addition to that, and we'll get everybody off the stage, including the PE teacher. A loss, I guess, for us is the fact that our CD classroom would be leaving. So while that's a loss to our learning community and our inclusiveness, we love having our CD program at Hollywood. We would gain another room because of that, which is space that we desperately need.
Any questions?
I should note, we had some communications from the community, in particular in regards to the cot that's in the front. Just wondering if there's, you can share more rationale on that or...
Well, the rationale was because the nurses' office is separated from the office suite, excuse me, we wanted to provide a private place if a student needed to be picked up from the office, or from the school at the front office. So that was generally the rationale for that.
That, and we have one secretary at Hollywood. While we have a full-time nurse on staff, because of our student medical needs are less than many of the other sites, our nurse, if there is an absence in the district, our nurse is frequently going to cover those absences where there are more medical needs at other buildings. So with that in mind, our secretary is often serving in the capacity of nurse, or I am serving in the capacity of nurse. And if I'm not in the building, the secretary would need to go to the nurse's office, and we also need to have someone at the front desk as well. So it's to try to alleviate those challenges.
I can also tell you, Dan, my wife is one of the ones that, she didn't send an email, but she was talking to me about it all day. Not all day, but she was mentioning it. What I think is, I like about this, and I don't think the concerns that she had, there was, there's no sort, I think what people were thinking of is like the current office today. There's really no area to do that, but there's like a little alcove here, and there's a little privacy. And so I think that alleviates at least my concern that I initially had with this, because I didn't see, I mean, I saw the plans, but I didn't like do a real close-up.
It's hard from above to know what's a wall and what's...
Right. But I think this is a nice, well, it might not be the ideal solution in a perfect setting, but I think it's a good solution, given the constraints that we have.
Because you'll have teachers coming in and there's no curtain or anything. That's the privacy issue for sure.
Right. Exactly.
So the circular things in the multipurpose room are lights. Correct. I really like those. Actually, I thought you were going to say the opposite.
In the meeting, Joel was like, I don't know. No, but what you were just kind of saying, like, I see those around now. Maybe I'm, I don't remember.
If I like them, then maybe they're already too old.
Yeah, that's what he was saying. They're very interesting. Like, who's really...
You can't see in these pictures, you can't see how they're suspended, I assume.
It looks like they're multi-level, right? They're different...
Yeah, they are at different levels. I mean, we obviously looked at different shapes, but circular worked well with music. It deals with the circle to teach, so...
Yeah, and that blue circle on the ground, too, is kind of to mimic, or like...
To provide an anchor for students and for teaching. So when the students do circle up in music class, they have a physical thing to go around.
Teachers usually tape the floor anyway in a circle in music class.
Right. So this is... No need for the tape.
It's always taped, yeah.
Yeah.
So where would the tables be stored at that point? I think I heard, you know, instrument storage on that white wall there.
Yeah, so these tables fold up into the middle and half, and so they would either be stored at one end or the other. We didn't have space, really the priority became storage of instruments. So the sacrifice was the storage of tables would just be at one end of the room or the other.
Can I ask you a question of Mr. Gatz, or maybe Martha could answer, about moving Ladsy to Central? Is that space allocation possible because you're anticipating students will be not moved from Ames and Blythe because of the shifting of populations back to where they, back to where they, because we often get overflow, is that correct?
Yeah, the overflow's been a longstanding thing. It's like everybody's kind of goes to Central, is what it's been.
Right.
With the proposed increase in classroom spaces at Blythe, that alleviates part of it. The idea is that I also have a four-grade level section transitioning out in fifth grade this year. So that's a classroom, and then getting back and everything below it right now is three-section grade level, so there's a room there as well. The functional spaces and making the tower as a possible overflow space if it ever came to that.
Yeah, I was going to say, what happens if you get a birth year that has a fourth section again? What happens to Ladsy? You know?
That's, I mean, that's always something we...
We always have that discussion, obviously.
We always have that discussion on an annual basis with them, if it ever came to that. But I think that, the idea is that that tower space that's shown as a conference room, this is the first year because of the vacated district office. I've had a conference room in three years. It's been the art room on Thursdays, and art's over Hollywood. So if it has to go back to something like that in order to accommodate a classroom space, then maybe we make it work.
Okay, thank you.
You know, Hart and I discussed this just yesterday, that if there is a four-section at the grade level, we have the flexibility at Ames to accommodate a four-section.
By taking those itinerant spaces with some flexible walls.
Yeah, no, because, you know, like, my daughter's 15 at RV, and they have, for some reason, this giant birth year, but my other daughter has a much smaller year. But that does happen, and I want to make sure we have plans for, you know, whatever school it is, and if they have a bump, that we have a place for that.
I think one of the things that the committee was really thoughtful throughout, and the board was really thoughtful about throughout, was doing this in the most financially responsible way possible. So we're about to hear about finance. We're talking about using this from our current fund balance, and this is not a going out to referendum or issuing debt proposal, which I think is really a unique scenario and a, you know, wonderful scenario for a school district to be able to consider something like this. But certainly fiscal responsibility was at the heart of it, and we were building for flexibility so that that very possible tenth section, you know, that you mentioned in a high birth year, it is potentially the tower at Central. It's potentially kind of moving itinerant spaces at Ames. We know that the Ladsy agreement is something that, you know, we really honor and we really value. If we were really in for it, we're seeing an enrollment change, that's something we would have to be discussing with the families involved in Ladsy. I don't anticipate that move, Ladsy need to move out in the short term. I don't want people to panic or think that that's any kind of immediate scenario, or hopefully not a scenario we need to address. But we're not building for extravagance. You know, we haven't, we haven't built a whole lot of extra space, and I know that was a question, a concern even from the community when we started this conversation two and three years ago, was how do you build the just right amount? You know? And that's why when we talk about doing the demographic study and looking at our enrollments and making Blythe a two-section school, we think we've gotten really, really close. We've, you know, we've made a really good projection and established the right amount of space. But it's something we'll always keep our eye on. I know the board will always keep their eye on.
One further comment in addition to that is that, I think, key innovation was starting with nine sections in kindergarten, by having two at Blythe and then three at Ames and three at Central and one at Hollywood. Because what's happened in the past is that you get to second grade, and then you got all these people moving in and first grade and so forth, and they're all over the district. I mean, so you ended up sticking them at Central, and then Central ended up with four. And so I think, just by, just by starting with nine rather than eight and spreading things out from the get-go, I think that makes a huge difference, because we've never had more than nine sections, as far as I can tell. And I think it's unlikely that we would have more than nine, even if we do get a bit of enrollment growth, because, you know, you can always add a couple students per class, you know? So I think we're, I think we should be good, unless there's a big increase, which we haven't seen much increase in enrollment really, you know, since the financial crisis of 2008. I mean, that's, run up to that point was... I mean, that's, run up to that point was when we had a massive increase and then we've had a much more gradual increase since then, so.
I think the change would be, we usually get a bump in first grade from private schools who have all-day kindergarten, so we'd have a bump in those kindergarten numbers. But I think we already have that bump when they're in first and second grade, so I think we could anticipate.
Exactly.
Yeah. If we go that way.
I'd like to echo what Martha said. I mean, this is, we're not going, we are going to spend a substantial amount of money, but DLA has taken to heart ideas about being efficient or minimizing renovations where possible and, but while at the same time providing for the need. I mean, one example is at Central where we had the issue of where do you put the coats and stuff? And they created really nice, efficient, small add to the existing classrooms, but we didn't go and try and renovate the entire classroom because we didn't need to. And so I appreciate that and I think we are, like I said, this is real money, but this is, this is a good, a good investment of resources.
I guess one thing I would like to say is, I know I've been involved in this for a while, but it's sort of nice seeing how everything's sort of come together, how we're basically, all the schools are in grade, not one school's getting more than the other. I mean, obviously we're spending more at Ames than everywhere else, but that's needed because it's going to be helping out. I mean, Ames is helping out Blythe and Blythe's helping out like Central and Central's helping out Hollywood. So there's, it's all this interconnectedness. It's like a big puzzle that we've moved together, and so I really do, it's nice seeing this all come together.
Was there always a fire hydrant instead of Central that I never paid attention to?
Yes.
I have the dumbest question, but I walk by it every day and I don't think I noticed it until it was on the diagram.
I saw that. I was like, I don't know.
There must be bushes there or something because I don't pay attention.
So I guess we should talk about...
We're ready to shift to finance. So Ryan, you don't, you don't get to join Jim for this conversation.
Jim's on his own. Thank you all, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thanks.
I'm going the wrong way here. There we go. This graph represents the five years of history and 10 years projected out that we put together last February. The red line is the fund balance at the end of each year, and the curve is represented by a gain and loss during each year. The blue line down at the bottom is 40% of our expenditures, so the board policy is to keep enough in fund balance to cover 40% of annual expenditures. So this graph is as of last February. You can see the green line segment there. Did some updates for when new numbers came in for FY '18, '19, and '20. And so if we shift the projections up to that, way over to the right, we're looking at FY '29, 80% fund balance, or after these adjustments, I'm sorry, 84%. This is the budget for all the projects that you just saw. And the very bottom, 19.2 million, would need to come out of operating to fund these So I added the purple line, dropping the fund balance down to, if we take the 19 million out of operating, the operating drops to 55% or 15 million, which lowers our projections to end up at 30% over the next 10 years. But we'll update the projections and hopefully we can balance it and keep the fund balance above the 40%. Any questions on the finance?
Just a question, I'd like to, I'd like to...
Your plots are very clear. I think that's a good, good way to look at that. What is the next step? Like, when do we start getting more information about the actual bid numbers and so forth? When does that, when does it all happen?
We have a pre-bid meeting on Friday.
I think people know, the board certainly knows Rameshner, but Rameshner is our owner's representative, so thanks for being here also.
So the drawings went out to bid today, and we have a fairly, the next 40 days are very critical in the sense that we have bids coming in on the 20th. From the 20th onwards, the next two weeks following that period, we're going to be wetting the bids. We're gonna go to look for the lowest responsible bidder. And then we're gonna come back to the board with recommendations to award subcontracts. And then those contracts get assigned to Burgland. And first week of January, we have to get going with the demolition, and then we follow up with constructions beginning this third week of January. So we have a very tight window to get all this thing going so that we can complete our projects by August. The trend right now, we've done cost estimates at the 75% stage and at the 90% stage. We met as a team, DLA, Vissara, and Burgland. We met at Burgland's office three weeks ago, two weeks ago, and we discussed where we were with the numbers. We were almost dead on with Ames because Ames had the most fixed program as compared to the others. So while I would say Hollywood was also, was very close to where we had projected it, but then we decide that because of the issue about the leases, we may have to go as awarding part of it as an alternate, depending on how the lease was signed. But Blythe went up pretty significantly because of the new additional classroom, the new location, the requirements from historic preservation. That changed that, so first of all, it was a very small project. And then even a small project, you make a slight adjustment, it jumps the number pretty significantly. So that number went up almost $500,000 for the variation that we saw in there. In the case of Central, from where we started last year, the program's changed pretty significantly, you know, from all the ramps that we put in, from filling in the pool, doing all the modifications. So that project also grew significantly. But overall, we feel that we are well within our contingencies that we had established. And even though it looks like we have changed from where we were like five months ago, it's still within our program contingency that we had established, saying that this should capture these kind of changes. But remember, since then, we've also added playgrounds. We want equipment that goes in there. Those are separate projects that have to be looked at. Those are not being captured, so we've got to make sure that we understand how this is being funded. So we have all the infrastructure for all the playgrounds going in, in this project, but the playground equipment itself is a different project. So but that, we, I'm almost certain, once bids are in, once we get awards done to Burgland, we'll be able to have a good idea as to where our contingencies are going to lie, and I'm almost certain we can, we'll be able to fund all those other projects with that. We won't have to go past the overall number that we've established.
Does that include the, the code group work at Houser and Central, or is that, are you, is that...
No, that we haven't, because that's a fairly significant project on its own. So it's right now, it's only funded for the design portion of it. So we haven't seen any reports from them. We can estimate it once it comes back, but that's a project for FY '21. So we'll see how, I mean, what they recommend. I mean, we can run an estimate, you know, next year and see what it's like. And then if we have remainder monies, maybe it can be fun from that, too. Because at this time, we have no intention of going past our contingencies that we've established. And we worked with Burgland to establish premium time allowances. I'll be talking about contracts extensively at the next board meeting when we get to the awards, because there's, there's a portion of it as to how we're going to establish allowances, because they want to use premium time allowances. But we feel that any amount, any amount of those monies that's not used must come back to the board. It should not be in Burgland's account. So how we write those contracts is important, but we're planning to work on that over the next 30 days.
Okay.
Do you think this includes furniture?
Yes. We had, there was also an extensive modification. We went from, you know, reusing, and then we said, okay, these additional classrooms need new furniture, and you know, so we've done...
Furniture is expensive.
Yes.
For example, early learners will take their early learner furniture with them, but then that will leave three classrooms at Blythe without furniture.
I know, I understand.
And that's also something we need to fast track because there's a long lead time and all schools open the same time. Everyone wants furniture at the same time in August, so we have some work there, so.
The next 45 days is the big one.
So I'm sorry, back to finance and the projections. I know you've told us before, but can you give us just a quick idea on, in terms of what are the factors that are pushing the fund balance down? Seems like things peak at 2023 and then start trending downward.
Sure. So this graph, the purple line, where we move all the money over for the projects, drops us down to 15.2 million. And then for six years, using the numbers from last February, we stay above the 40%. And then as you get further out, then it crosses over and, so we use somewhat conservative numbers on those.
So I guess, I definitely understand that. I guess what I'm, what I'm asking is, when you see, even when you're talking about taking out the, the fund balance for the projects, we're at a positive variance and things are trending upward the first few years and then seeming to peak in 2023 or 2024 and then start trending downward.
So I, we put in a number that will, I think about 5% for health insurance. And our revenue, so that's maybe a little high to be safe. And on the other side, for revenues, I use 2% for CPI. So eventually, your 5% has been over to your 2%.
You assume 3% for operating costs in general.
And, and supplies and everything else, 3%.
Salaries.
So eventually, if, it doesn't mean we're not going to change things between now and then. If this starts to turn out this way, then we will have to do something to balance it. But just putting those numbers in and kind of calculating it out without making adjustments, this is where we're at. So my plan is to go back, now that I've got some newer data for the past three years, and take that out another 10 years. We've also kind of committed that we'll balance each budget, so if you took that 15 million and drew it straight across, it would be above the 40%. Ideally, we'll start adding back to the balance also.
Yeah, just the scale of the project system was more...
Different than when we first started talking. That's why it looks so much scarier with the 19.
But I do have to still say, though, what Martha alluded, said earlier, is that we are taking on a significant project. We're spending a significant amount of money and we're not going to referendum. I mean, I don't know any school district anywhere that's...
You're not taking out debt.
Right.
No, and I, I would never agree to that.
No, that's correct.
But I'm just saying, like, we're doing something, I don't think any school district that I know of in Illinois, or possibly even the nation, is taking on this type of project without debt or referendum.
I understand. I just want to keep our balance in the right direction, which is a difficult task for you to...
So we can make decisions to affect that.
Yeah, I know.
I'm sure we will.
Hopefully our cost estimates won't jump too far.
The curve was built when it was way up.
Yeah, I know.
You know, it didn't matter as much. But now when you see this, now we have to look closer at it.
And playground equipment is not insignificant, so we'll have to be careful about those things.
Yeah, just to add on to David's point, I mean, that's a good point you're making, David, and I think it's not totally clear to people, but our tax revenue pays not just for our operating funds, but also for our capital funds. And that, that's what's different than, than many other schools where they actually issue debt certificates and all the rest, and they have a separate tax levy to pay for that. So, so, right, it's sort of six of one half dozen the other in a way, but you're right, we're paying that out of the operating expenses, so.
Any other questions?
I'm sure you've accounted for staff increase with future negotiations and things like that, anticipated, you know?
I just built in 3%.
Just three, yeah.
All the way, I didn't take into account retirements or the fine tuning.
Well, that was longer than a 10-minute presentation.
We knew that this one was big and that there were a lot of pieces to it, so appreciate everyone.
That's important.
Do we need a break or anything?
No. No, no breaks. There's no breaks.
Oh, and I guess, sure, I won't, I guess you can take the next one.
I don't want Angela to disappear, we need her.
All right. Anything more for facilities? No? Okay. Next up then is Education Committee.
Okay. We're gonna hear from Ms. Angela Dolezal about, this is an option that was not an option before. The state has given different options for schools regarding e-learning and snow days and what happens on those days when we are not in session for some reason. So we're gonna hear about, we haven't made any decisions, but what our options are. So Angela, please come on.
And I'll just interject, too. So this is something that the board actually would vote on at a public, after a public hearing, if this is something that the board was interested in pursuing. I will tell you that it's somewhat related to our other conversation because if we were to have a dreadful winter with a lot of need for makeup days, that would be problematic to a construction timeline. So I, you know, have worked with this team and have said, like, could we look at this with the idea that there could be some urgency in this? We did, and it's probably, maybe it's reminded in the presentation, but we right now are holding President's Day as a makeup emergency day, so if we had a snow day between now and that date in February, we would probably just use, we would probably take it as a typical emergency non-attendance day and make it up on President's Day. It's just if we ended up with several, we would want to carefully consider this an option. So I appreciate the board taking time to learn about it in, here in December, and would be something we would potentially act on at the December board meeting.
Yeah, and historically, we don't usually, at least as far as I've lived, I've lived here for 19 years, and we've had very few snow days, except for the last year or two. Had some unusual weather, but I think it's important at least to talk about.
All right. Thank you very much. I have to say that I have not worked on this alone. It's been a team of people, so Pam Shaw, Jason Smith, Tefanor and I have been working together on this plan, this proposal of a plan to present to you tonight. And so should you have any questions, they're going to be helping out with those questions as well. As Dr. Ryan Toye stated, tonight I'm presenting information about a possible e-learning plan for District 96. We'll have to hold a public hearing at our December 18th board meeting to formally present the proposal and have action on that proposal by you after the public has a chance to make comments on the proposal as well. So while the law provides for this opportunity, as Dr. Ryan Toye stated, the main precipitous for working on this plan and working on having it prior to the winter break is because we're looking at what are our possibilities, what are our options, should we end up with multiple snow days, given that we are starting construction in the spring. So what is an e-learning day? An e-learning day came about, e-learning days came about when Governor Pritzker signed Public Act 101, 0012 on June 7th of 2019. And what that does is it allows school districts to utilize e-learning days in lieu of emergency days. Using an e-learning day in lieu of an emergency day will allow curriculum to continue for students, so that they're staying on track during those inclement weather days or those emergency closing days, instead of having to stop for the emergency day and then tacking on those days at the end of the year. We'd use an e-learning day, we'd consider using an e-learning day when an emergency closing was deemed necessary. And as Dr. Ryan Toye stated, our first emergency closing, should we have one, will actually be made up on February 17th, which, which was built into the calendar for this year. So we'd use President's Day for the first emergency closing. Should there be second, third emergency closing, then we would look at the possibility of using an e-learning day. It's important to note that while some districts look at E and the e-learning part as electronic, we are focusing on it being engaged learning. We recognize that not all of our students have technology that they're bringing back and forth to schools. We recognize that we don't want our students to all be on technology on an emergency closing day. So it's very important to note that in District 96, that E is engaged learning, not electronic So as we've developed, worked on developing the plan, the steps that we've taken, we've explored what districts are pursuing plans. We surveyed 41 schools, and out of those 41 schools that we surveyed, those were Whiskey Schools and West 4D Schools. And so there's some overlap, but the total of schools is 44. Out of those 44, 22 of those schools responded, and out of those 22 that responded, eight schools are pursuing... that responded, eight schools are pursuing e-learning plans. So those eight, one of those schools is a whiskey-only school, one has an overlap of whiskey and West Forty, five of them are West Forty-only schools. And then we also added RB into there, being a feeder school for RB, and they have an e-learning, they have e-learning plans as well. We consulted with Gower School District, and we chose Gower as a school district to consult with because we knew they already had implemented an e-learning plan last year. They are a comparable school to our district, and they are in the Whiskey, they are in the Whiskey Elementary School, one of the Whiskey Elementary School districts.
Can you remind everyone what Whiskey stands for, the West?
Oh, West.
Thank you.
Bourbon Consortium.
Thank you, because there's so much jargon.
Yes.
It's so hard for people, especially in the military.
And I try hard not to put jargon in, and yes, thank you.
This is what it is. Thank you.
I appreciate that. The four of us working on this team have had discussions with different professional-like, job-like people through Whiskey, through West Forty. I've been talking to different curriculum directors in these groups. Dr. Ryan Toye's talked to different superintendents in these groups. I know Pam Shaw's reached out to different directors of special education to talk about the logistics for special education. And Don Tofano has talked to different tech directors as well. So we've been working with our different groups as we've worked to develop what the plan for District ninety-seven could look like. And then we've had conversations with staff members and administrators. We've done a survey of the home internet access for our students. We've used collaborative plan time to discuss the district e-learning plan and how we're planning our e-learning lessons. And we've worked to determine the organizational structure of those lessons. What would those lessons look like? How long would they be? What would students be responsible for learning or working on during those emergency closings? So should we go forward with an e-learning plan, how would we work on communicating that information home? We would work to send out emails to our parents' guardians. We would have a video tutorial that we would put on our webpage, so that parents are able to see how we'd access e-learning plans, the e-learning lessons. We'll have an E, we are working to have an e-learning webpage, which would consist of frequently asked questions. It would have grade level links that parents could click on to then access contact information, as well as in the event of an emergency closing, those links would have the e-learning lessons for those students. What we've talked about with staff members is that our pre-kindergarten through second grade students would have a packet of, a packet that would go home prior to emergency closing days. So this packet would be at home, should there be an emergency closing day, that students would then, when you click on the link, the packet would also be accessible on that link. But students would do activities from that packet. Grades three through eight would have lessons assigned by their teachers that would be linked on the webpage. Those lessons may be technology-based, but they also may be based on activities or books that are being read in class, or math, math projects that have been done, or social studies projects that have been done. So it's not all technology-based, but they will all be linked on that page. It's also important to note that the amount of work for pre-kindergarten and kindergarten would be half the amount of work as the first through eighth graders, as our pre-kindergarten and kindergarten students are only in school for half a day. And this is just a mock-up of what the e-learning website would look like. We've talked with the staff about what are the staff responsibilities for an e-learning day. What we're looking at is that prior to an e-learning day, our pre-kindergarten through fifth grade staff members would create subject-specific lessons. Our sixth- or eighth-grade teachers would create lessons specific to their class assignments. Encore and special teachers are working on creating lessons for their areas of instruction. Special education teachers are creating individualized modified lessons for the students on their caseloads, and they're working with the gen ed teachers for their students as they work to create those individualized modified lessons. We've asked the teachers to create lessons for two e-learning days, so that they're prepared should there be two days that were called in a row. We are also, we are also asking our teachers to be sure students know their logins for email, Google Classroom, CSO, RAS Kids, whatever's being used in their classroom, if they're going to use it in their e-learning plan. Because our students are able to access it in the classroom automatically, but if they get home using a different piece of technology, we want to make sure that they remember how to access it through that. And then also having the teachers ensure the students can access the e-learning webpages and the grade level links. On, in the event of an e-learning day, the lessons would be linked to that webpage by eight thirty AM. They'd be available to students from eight thirty to one thirty. The teachers would be available to students from eight thirty to one thirty, not the lessons, the lessons will be available the whole time. And then the teacher should be available by email or Google Classroom or CSO, and they would communicate the way that they would be available. Before talking about student responsibilities, I want to talk about a couple of things with the teachers. We've used last month seventy-five minute PD to talk with the teachers about this possible plan, and we gave them time to begin to work on the plan. And one of the things we're looking for is consistency. So at the elementary level, all the teachers at one grade level work together to develop the lessons for that grade level. So a student at Ames in first grade would have the same lessons assigned as a student at Central in first grade. So we looked at consistency. We also talked about, at the middle school, the middle, most of the middle school teachers prefer to, because the middle school students are consistently using their Chromebooks, most of the middle school teachers prefer to develop their lessons the night before, as if they were developing subplans for the next day. So shouldn't e-learning day be called, their lessons are actually being created in time with what's happening at that day that that lesson would have happened in class. The students should have their Google CSO or and/or RAS Kids logins at home. They should be able to access and complete their assigned lessons. They should be able to turn in completed work upon the day that we return to school. And they should be able to contact their teachers with any questions. When we talk about the student lessons, what we've talked about is for the elementary students, they would be responsible for the core academic subjects of English Language Arts, mathematics, social studies, and science. They'd be responsible then also for the special area class that they had on that day. So if we had an e-learning day on a Tuesday, and a student had PE that day, they would do the PE module, the PE lesson for that day. At the middle school level, the students would follow their schedule. So they would do their core subjects, and they would also do whatever encore classes that they're taking, as well as PE. We'll look at attendance by the work that's completed. So students turn in their work upon their return, and that will determine if they were present for that day, or if they were absent, if they don't turn it in. And then the important part of all this is that we would evaluate any e-learning days that we do have. We'd survey our families, and we'd also collect data on the work completion percentage to see if it is showing that most of our students are completing the work, or if we're seeing that most families are not doing this. So that's our proposed plan. Does anyone have any questions?
Is the idea just to implement it this year then?
Yes.
Is that we do this coming winter, essentially?
Yes.
Yeah. You mentioned maybe what I need some more later this month. I guess you asked for like parent involvement or parent, like our input feedback from families. I mean, that doesn't seem like that was that much time for, or have you already gone and spoke with the families?
The parent feedback would be if we were to have an e-learning day, surveying how the e-learning day went. Yes.
Yeah, how do we as a board, though, know if the community wants it? That's the tricky part.
Yeah, it's a good question, and it's something we won't know entirely. And I suppose we could think about a short survey between now and the December board meeting. We could also postpone this till January. It's just that we know we're getting into kind of a bad weather season. We do have that February date we're holding. So, you know, that's one option, is to postpone this until January, if we felt the survey was really important. We've talked to our parent leadership team a couple times. I know that's a small representative group that then often takes that information back to their PTAs and PTOs. We do hear a common theme from other districts, and that's that you're going to get mixed parent feedback. You know, that there are going to be parents that really appreciate the opportunity to sort of have the child at home and still have a learning day, and not look at makeup days in June and that kind of thing. And we have also heard that families will say, this, this just didn't feel like, you know, a meaningful enough instructional day. I mean, we know that we are, severe weather days are challenges across the board, right? I mean, it's, I don't want to say it's a no-win situation, they're just, they're just challenging. The makeup days can be hard on families. An e-learning day could be a challenge. We didn't mention, and I know it's a sort of aside, but I think it's an important aside. We have been, I think, fortunate to have the Riverside Parks and Recreation willing to work with us and provide supervision. They knew that this was something we were exploring, and they've said, you know, what would we need to do to be a partner with you? Does it mean, you know, warm place with good Wi-Fi and adult supervision? You know, would that help?
Yeah, we often, in our villages, have power outages, as we've recently even seen last week. And what happens? Do we have contingency plans?
Right.
For if there is no Wi-Fi, no power, what do we do to ensure, you know, and the packets home, those, they're going to get lost. So we need, we need to figure out what happens to educate everybody if you go through with this. Like, where does it get put? I don't even think my daughter's currently logged into CSO at home, things like that. So are we all on board for that?
And I guess sort of, I know the E stands for engaged, but there is like a, this is electronic. I mean, and I guess my concern is with this program. While I think, while I think it's great, and I think it's something that's a good option, I'm concerned that you, for kids who, or families who do have daycare options, they, they don't, kids don't, my kids, my daughter and junior high still doesn't have a computer. I mean, there's a lot of parents that don't have a personal device for their kids. And so if they do go to daycare, or they go to like North Riverside, or if they go to some other place where they might have Wi-Fi, but if they don't have a device.
Grandma's.
It's not going to work.
Yeah, right.
And then they're going to be marked as missing it, because their parents aren't going to come home until night, at night, and it's like from eight thirty to one thirty. Their parents still have to go to work. And then, I mean, how is that going to be?
So I think we'll run into that situation where we'll have to problem solve more at the middle school than the elementary school. A lot of the elementary teachers are doing tic-tac-toe board-like things, like a choice board. And there are choices on there that are not technology-related. So there will be options that.
So you print it out, you say you print it out and then fill it out?
So then the tech, like accessing it is what you're talking about, is if you link it, like if a parent's not home, to pull up the link to see what the thing is.
Right.
Okay. Something to continue to.
Right. So they're trying to get out the door, they still have to go to work.
Some of them still have to go to work.
Right.
That would be the life in my house, yes.
Yeah. So I mean, and also something I don't want to, while I know we're a privileged district, what about families that don't have this as well? I mean, how are we?
Don't have access to technology?
Right.
So I'm going to let Don Tofano talk to that.
Don's going to drive it to their house.
Well, this information, more or less, do they have internet access, and what level of access do they have?
Right, right.
Versus, you know, do you have a device at home? Because we're not one-to-one across the board.
Right, right.
So kids are only taking home in grades five through eight.
Right, right.
So our updated numbers, we have, we're running like, well, ninety-five percent of the district has been surveyed. So we're only missing just under, just slightly over five percent. But we're running at less than one percent of families that have no access at all. The bulk, by far, have high-speed access, but there are some that, and again, the numbers are low, mobile hotspots or smartphone access. But vast majority have high speed and a very small percentage. So we'd be looking at under twenty students, which, that's students, not families. Then we have to look at those students, say, well, how many families are actually impacted. The remain, the parents that we haven't gotten responses back from on the ninety-six students, the schools will have them call, and we should have close to a hundred percent, you know, response by, by the next meeting. But.
And while that one percent is, I mean, statistically insignificant, I just don't, I don't want those twenty kids or happy to.
Counted absent.
To be punished, yeah.
Well, what some districts have done is they, you know, what they've done, they've gone out and purchased mobile hotspots that are available for checkout. So there are, there are ways to work around that. But we want to look at what the numbers are and then see what's truly a viable option.
So I guess my only recommendation would be that if we do rule this out this year, that we don't penalize those kids.
And we wouldn't. We wouldn't.
Because I mean, it's like, because we, we look at like delinquency rates, I mean, something things are tied to, like kids showing up, and they're going to be not get their homework done.
It can become a bit of a catch-22, though.
Right.
You know, because if you say that it's, it's not going to count against some people, then you're kind of pulling, putting a disincentive for others to take it seriously.
Right, no, I understand, I understand that. But at the same token, if we don't have something in place to address that at this point, and if, once we have something in place, then I, then I agree. But seeing that we don't have necessarily a vetted process in place yet, that's my concern.
It seems like it's a very new idea, very experimental. And it's sort of going to be, it's kind of hard to predict how it would all play out, right?
Right.
And this is the kind of thing, I think, you just, you know, to really find out, is it going to work, or what do we need to change, you know? You just have to, I think you just have to do it, basically, and then say, oh, well, didn't work perfectly, we got to make this adjustment, we maybe some people fell through the cracks, we got to help them out, whatever. I just, I don't see how you can really see how it's going to go unless you, unless you try it.
And by doing it once or twice, doesn't mean we have to commit to doing it for years. You can try it. And if it's just a, the feedback is this is not good, we'd rather have an emergency day at the end of the year, then, and we need to do that, right? Yeah.
And it might depend on, is it a day up next to a holiday? Is it, you know, and there's, there's all these factors. The other thing we've talked about with inclement weather too, is we did a late arrival one day last year.
Some people love it, and you love it.
Over time, they might.
That idea was fairly favorably received by staff and families. So, you know, there's, there's so many things we will stop and think about, and they will have to be sort of in real time, right? And what are the weather conditions? What is the date on the calendar? You know, certainly, what feedback do we get if we do it once? I know one of the other districts we talked to, they said their, their teachers really liked it and said, you know, we want it to be always. And, you know, every emergency day would have to be an e-learning day. And it's like, no, you know, no, because there's too many other, there're too many other factors. You know, last, was it last year, we had two days in a row or something, you know? And, you know, three days in a row, would that just be too much? I mean, you know, what is, so those are real-time decisions. And really, the feedback is so valuable, the feedback from all of you, and a lot of time and attention.
And your, your presentation, I think, is spot-on in terms of what you're looking at, and trying to address the littler kids with, you know, a packet or something that they can do on their own, and then how the middle school kids just get essentially as a substitute prep issue. I think, having had a daughter who did do an e-learning day, and I would honestly say it was pretty much just a day at home, if we're going to go this route, and I put a limit on it and say, maybe we'll look at two days, but no more than that.
RB, yeah, I was, I was going to comment that it's.
It was, it was.
Yeah, I was going to comment the opposite. My son's experience with the e-learning day was he slept in real late because he thought he was going to have to do nothing. And when he looked, he was doing stuff all day.
Last year.
Mine. And that's, I think, there's.
And so what class you're taking, probably.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's obviously dependent.
Yeah, and this actually, this kind of supports. It's going to be very variable in terms of, and you've recognized that. So it's going to be very variable what each student gets out of it. So I think, two days, and that's why I'm, I think I'm pretty adamant on the two days, as I think about this. But two days is okay. More than that, I think we're going to lose educational time. And it is experimental, and it is going to have to require a lot of just on the fly, fine tuning, and.
Some experience and.
Support, trying it out and seeing what happens, but not being too committed to it if it doesn't work out.
I would say that my daughter's experience with the e-learning day at RB was, was maybe about a half to two-thirds of a regular day, perhaps, I might be being generous. But at the same time.
My daughter was maybe a quarter.
So I'm going, so interesting, last year, there was a period of time when the state, the state had, had backed off of a five-hour instructional day.
Right.
And so there were districts that kind of jumped in and did e-learning during this period of flexibility. The, the state is now being clear that it must be five hours of instruction. And so an e-learning day, and I don't want to speak for RB, but an e-learning day last year might be different than an e-learning day for them this year in terms of hours of time of instruction for students.
The other question I have is, when we do the makeup days, you know, on June fifth, the end of the year, and the kids are coming in, and they've taken their finals, like, is, are we really expecting them, like, they're going to be there studying all day? I mean, I'm kind of doubtful. Just what I see, what's happening at the end of the year.
Right.
It's not happening.
No, that is something to consider as well.
They left for vacation early.
Some of the, after the Park District or RB, some of the summer program had already started, so there are families that were really felt they were also in a quandary about that. Do I go to the last day of school, or do I go to the summer program that I've already signed up for? So, you know, there's.
program that I've already signed up for? So, you know, there's, again, it gets, it certainly speaks to that. They're, they're imperfect solutions.
Right. I think, I think, we, I know, I know you guys will all think of this, but what kind of support options can the[1564.83]